Shall they refuse to obey the orders of the mayor or the rules of the city council? It shall be the duty of the chief of police to present, to be present and on official duty at all regular special council meetings of the council. In the case of this entity to attend, the chief shall designate a certified officer to be present. So with that being said, in the back of the room, out in the hallway, there's two sign-up sheet. One is for the public hearing tonight for the UVO. Ms. Winn, could you come in to show that? One is for the UVO public hearing. The other is for tonight's agenda, that put your name legibly, the agenda item you wish to speak on. And then when you approach the podium, state your name. We'll put the timer up on the screen. Soon as you start speaking, we'll start the clock. When that three minutes is up, that's it. Okay, thank you. We'll get started here shortly. Free clothes.
It's not atomic.
All right, counsel, we'll go ahead and start. We'll begin with this public hearing. Y'all ready? Ready? Y'all ready? So I will go into this public hearing first. The City of Clarksville, Arkansas has called for the public hearing on the topic of a proposed issuance of revenue bonds by the City of Clarksville, Arkansas, University of the Ozarks Public Educational Facilities Board. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public comments on the City of Clarksville's request. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with Arkansas Code Annotated 14-54-904. All public comments will be taken into consideration. The rules for this meeting are, all speakers must sign in, speak plainly, and give their name and address, as well as the business they represent. All comments should be addressed to the hearing body. Comments should be relevant to the topic and should not be of a personal nature. Please avoid repetitive comments. If there are a large number of speakers, including many who are a part of a group or organization, please ask for a representative to speak on behalf of the group or organization. Unruly behavior such as booing, or hissing, or harassing remarks are prohibited. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment period. I've asked Ms. Gloria Garcia, she's here with us from UVO. Do you want to kind of update the council on what we're doing here?
Yeah.
You will approach the podium and just state your name, please. Thank you for being here.
You're welcome. Good evening, everyone. I'm Gloria Arcia. I've served as Executive Vice President and Chief Financial Officer for University of the Ozarks. I was project manager on this project. What they're constructing is a 250-bed freshman hall, residence hall, in replacement of Smith and King Hall, which are our oldest residence halls for freshmen and early sophomores. The new construction is going to be a 250-bed residence hall. First and second floor will have a common area, will be a sheltering place. It'll have a common kitchen, as well as common areas for students to collaborate and engage. There will also be a staff apartment within the building, fully equipped.
Yeah, it's gonna be amazing, actually.
The bonds is only for partial funding of the project. There's a second funder. In total, it's 27,120,000.
Thank you, Ms. Gloria.
Any other questions?
At this time, are there any questions from the public? Okay, please, please come to the podium, state your name.
It's just because I walk up there all the time. What's gonna happen to the two dorms that you've moved out of?
Great question. They've, one of them, the King Hall, has met its life expectancy. It'll be erased at some point. The Smith Hall, we haven't decided. It'll be probably mothballed, and deliberation on what the future of it is still in play.
Are there any other questions?
It's just because I walk up there all the time. What's gonna happen to the two dorms that you've moved out of?
Great question. They've, one of them, the King Hall, has met its life expectancy. It'll be erased at some point. The Smith Hall, we haven't decided. It'll be probably mothballed, and deliberation on what the future of it is still in play.
Are there any other questions?
It's just because I walk up there all the time. What's gonna happen to the two dorms that you've moved out of?
Great question. They've, one of them, the King Hall, has met its life expectancy. It'll be erased at some point. The Smith Hall, we haven't decided. It'll be probably mothballed, and deliberation on what the future of it is still in play.
Are there any other questions? Public comments, questions, concerns? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we will close the public comment period. Thank you, Ms. Garcia. I appreciate you. And that will close the public hearing for that. Thank you very much. Rotate over to our regular monthly council meeting. Come to order. Brother Bradley, will you leave something to order for the people?
Let's pray. Dear God, thank you for the day. Thank you for the blessings that you give us every day. Thank you for our city. Thank you for everyone that has a part in the operation of our city. Just continue to guide us. Let us always make decisions when we look to you. Guide us tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Ms. Barbara, could you call the roll, please?
Baker.
Here.
Bradley.
Here.
Edens.
Here.
King.
Here.
Riceinger.
Here.
Thompson.
Counsel, on the agenda, we kind of, I just want to make sure your agenda tracks the same under unsecured business. A is transfer property to the county. Six A is gonna be resolution issuance of revenue bonds for UVO. Ordinance for rezoning the Reese property. Ordinance for rezoning DVN LLC. Orders to conduct business with the city, Hunter's Towing. Orders to conduct business with the city, Plain Works. Resolution to set public hearing of Vacating Street and in the CCU audit. That's how it should read?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Would entertain a motion to approve that agenda?
Some.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Barbara?
Baker.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
Edens. Yes. King.
Yeah.
Riceinger.
Yes.
We have a motion for approval of the minutes.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Barbara?
Bradley.
Yes.
Edens. Yes. King.
Yeah.
Riceinger.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Who's that out there that owes me push-ups? That's in the military, that's what they make you do, right? If your phone goes off, push-ups. Hit the right mat. Yep. Six A, transfer of property to the county. We started discussing that last council meeting. I don't think we actually made a final decision on it, which we kind of need to. This is the 11 acres east of the sheriff's, existing sheriff's office now.
Refresh my memory, Mayor, didn't we table that because we were gonna either have Deirdre look at making something up official, you know, like for maybe getting a discount from the county on housing inmates? Or was that, is that my mind not remembering correctly?
I don't remember that, to be honest with you.
I believe she was just gonna do a resolution.
I think we're just gonna have the county judge come and talk to us about it.
Yeah.
Was some discussion on, are y'all asking for anything?
Yeah.
Then maybe that's what.
Yeah. I know the county judge's here tonight, and Judge, I tell you, if the county would continue to support us out around Lake Lubbock with the roads, I think that would be a fair exchange over time.
Glad to do that. You know, Court of Court has been gracious enough over a long period of time on American Rescue money. We've obligated half of our money, 2.5 million, to especially District Court. That's really one of the main priorities. We, and we need a place for people along these. We need more offices. And then, of course, we need to work on the sheriff's office. It's probably 25, 30 years old, but it's 99. We just need to do that. The Court of Court has been very good about it, and I've led them that way, and bear much for it. And if we can do that 2.5 billion, hopefully the city can help us with this 11 acres, because you know in the future.
Yeah.
Well, when I went in, in 2015, we had, we had saved 20 years of a million dollars. We added on 50 beds. Now they have 80 to 90 at a time.
Yeah.
So it's coming. We're just trying to get our facilities up. There's a lot of things need to be done, and we can't do them all. But we're certainly gonna continue to work on it.
It'd be a good place for you, it'd be the good place to, probably the least expensive way for them to expand, because it's, if I remember, if memory serves right, that property used to be the old landfill. It's, it's partially, it was partially in the flood plain there, so it's got to be built up, and so I, yeah, and I think it can be done much more reasonable.
That's what, what it's all about. That's all of all. We're just looking to the future. The architect is already drawing. He sent me both information from when he talked to Judge Cap, Chief Depp, and the sheriff, and their needs, and then we put the party. There's no way it'd take a lot more than what we got, but we're gonna spend every dime of that 2.5 million.
On that.
Improving our facilities down there.
Yep.
And yes, of course, we're glad to keep up the road like we did in agreement or whatever. Can we get an agreement with the county stating that?
Can do it in an agreement resolution. Yep. Bring that back to you.
At the next meeting.
Help us with that, Deirdre. So I have a motion to craft up an agreement resolution, bring that to the council in August for approval.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Barbara?
Edens.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Riceinger.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Judge, thank you very much.
Thank you, 'cause I'll get to come back next month.
We're not letting you off the hook. We like you coming over. I'll have food next time. Six A is a resolution on issuance of revenue bonds for UVO. Ms. Barbara, could you read that?
A resolution approving issuance of revenue bonds by the City of Clarksville, Arkansas, University of the Ozarks Public Educational Facilities Board, and prescribing other matters relating thereto. Whereas pursuant to ordinance number 191 adopted May 11, 1987, the City Council of the City of Clarksville, Arkansas, the city created the City of Clarksville, Arkansas, University of the Ozarks Public Education Facilities Board, the board. And whereas the board proposes to issue not to exceed 700,000 of its revenue bonds taxable refunding Series 2024A, the Series 2024A bonds, to refund the board's refunding revenue bond Series 2015, the Series 2015 bond. And whereas the board further proposes to issue not to exceed 30,300,000 of its revenue bonds refunding and improvement Series 2024B, the Series 2024B bonds, and collectively on the Series 2024A bonds, bonds, to finance a portion of the cost of acquiring, constructing, furnishing, and equipping a new approximately 250-bed residence hall on the campus of University of the Ozarks, the university, which is centrally located at 415 North College Avenue in the city, and refund the board's refunding revenue bond Series 2020, the Series 2020 bond. Whereas, a public hearing on the question of the issuance of the bonds has been held before the City Council of the city on this day, following the publication of a notice of such hearing in the Johnson County Graphic and is paper of general circulation within the city on June 26, 2024. Whereas the City Council of the city has determined that the public purposes for which the bonds are to be issued serve a proper need. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Clarksville, Arkansas, Section 1, the issuance of the Series 2024A bonds by the board to refund the Series 2015 bond is hereby authorized and is in all respect approved. Proceeds of the Series 2015 bond were used to refund the board's revenue bond Series 2020, 2010, the Series 2010 bonds. Proceeds of the Series 2010 bonds were used to finance the following: A, the acquisition, construction, equipping, and furnishing of trustee hall, a residence hall located at 32 Houston Street in the city; B, laboratory renovations at the Thomas and Francis Wilson Science Center located at 608 North Johnson Street in the city; and C, expansion of the first floor of the Safe Student Center located at 415 North College Avenue in the city, to add a fitness center, men's and women's locker rooms, aerobics area, and security and health clinics offices. Section 2, the issuance of the Series 2024 bonds to refinance a portion of the cost of the improvements, which will be located at 416 North College Avenue in the city, and to refund the Series 2020 bond, is hereby authorized and is in all respects approved. Proceeds of the Series 2020 bonds were used to refund the board's revenue bond taxable Series 2019, the Series 2019 bond, which financed renovations to McLean Hall, a residence hall located at 412 North College Avenue in the city. Section 3, all of the facilities financed and refinanced by the Series 2024 bonds will be owned and operated by University of the Ozarks and Arkansas Non-Profit Corporation. The Series 2024 bonds will be issued as qualified 501(c)(3) bonds, as defined in Section 145 of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended Section 4. By the adoption of this resolution, the city assumes no liability or responsibility for the repayment of the bonds. Section 5, the appointment of Friday Eldridge and Clark LLP as Bond Counsel and Cruising Associates Incorporated as underwriter for the bonds is hereby approved. Section 6, provisions of this resolution are hereby declared to be separable, and if any section, phrase, or provision shall for any reason be declared illegal or invalid, such declaration should not affect the validity of the remainder of this resolution. Section 7, all resolutions and parts thereof in conflict herewith or hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section 8, this resolution shall be enforced and effective immediately upon accurate passage.
Thank you, Ms. Barbara. Counsel, do you have questions or comments?
No.
Let's motion we approve the resolution.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Barbara?
King.
Yes.
Riceinger.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Paul. Ryan. Appreciate you being on there, just in case we needed you, Ms. Gloria. Thank you for being here. Good luck with that project. We're seeing, already seeing a positive impact from it. So thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Six A is gonna be the ordinance for rezoning the Reese property. Could you read that, please?
An ordinance adopting recommended amendment to the official zoning map for the City of Clarksville, Arkansas, whereas the City of Clarksville has heretofore adopted a zoning ordinance and official zoning map to guide and influence the allocation and arrangement of land uses, development of land, and the future building within the corporate limits of the City of Clarksville. Whereas a petition was filed in accordance with provisions of said ordinance to rezone certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Clarksville. Whereas a public hearing was held on said petition on June 27, 2024. The planning commission approved the boundary changes on June 27, 2024, and recommended that the city council adopt the change, whereas said change was reviewed in its entirety and found to be wholly acceptable. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Clarksville, Arkansas, that Section 1, the following described land shall be rezoned from zoning classification R1 to C3 to I1. Description Exhibit A, all of said property being located at Poffer Street/Highway 123 and Big Danger Road in Clarksville, Arkansas. Section 2, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith or hereby repealed.
Thank you, Ms. Barbara. So before we open this up, I just wanted to give you a little background history on it. This project actually started about two years ago, prior to this council. So the council before this one actually got it started. It's been through numerous public hearings, commission meetings, city council meetings. There's, there's absolutely no secret to what's been going on here with this project. Planning the zone, he done his due diligence. They, they looked at this, at this project in its totality. They, they approved this, this rezone. It has to be approved by the council now. So with that, Stephen?
Sure.
Could you come up and address the council?
Sure.
Well, I created this little flyer today, understanding that there were a lot of questions that kind of popped up at the 11th hour, and I hope to, one, dispel any rumors that are out there, and two, you know, shed some light, as we've been doing on this data center project, to give you some context where we're at now. And Morgan can probably speak to this in a second. But data center clients had come to us, and we're looking for an opportunity to develop in Clarksville, which was a huge opportunity for us to look at a project that size and scope. With that being said, they've already acquired one parcel. They've gone through the rezone process, and now they're looking at an additional parcel that is next door to essentially co-locate their sites. We had considered looking at the Clarksville Commerce Park. That didn't satisfy the bill, because it's not, it's not a large enough parcel. The utility arrangement wasn't exactly right out there for them, especially on the water side. And the parcels that we're looking at rezoning today would satisfy the needs for the client in that regard. So I guess, one question I think we should address, multiple rather, but one question in particular is, what is a hyperscale data center? There are some folks that believe that means crypto mining, and I'm here to tell you, without a doubt, it is not a crypto mining operation. And I haven't sent this to anybody yet today, but I am willing to bet my job that if, if this turns out to be a crypto mining facility, I will resign effective immediately. Okay? I take that very seriously, because I am a, my wife and I raised three kids on a single income. So I am very confident in stating that, and I think there is nothing but upside potential for this community and for the jobs that it brings with it. Okay? With that being said, I have had some interactions with, with crypto mining facilities and their developers. Usually they're investors. The two occasions that that's happened for me, they've been overseas investors. One was from China, the other one was from UAE. Had a lengthy discussion with them, heard their thoughts, what they were looking for. One was before the hyperscale data center client, and another one was after. And just so we're clear, these are not related to these folks. Okay? Totally separate projects. In both cases, on those cryptos, crypto mining facilities, I clearly indicated to them that I don't think this is a good fit for the community, and I think everybody in this room would agree. They're noisy, they come with a very small investment, more often than not. The job creation certainly isn't there. I know a bad deal when I see one. So we've turned them away, and we have not, we have not engaged with them any further. And, you know, I saw that there were some comments about, why, why are we just now hearing about this? I can say that we've been working on this for a couple of years. This has been through numerous iterations of planning and zoning at this point. We did a property purchase on, on one last year. I've been to multiple chamber events. By the way, if you're not a chamber member, I recommend you become one, so you can stay in the loop. So we've discussed this project. Now, I haven't been able to disclose everything, because I am under nondisclosure, right? And we do have to protect the interest of the, the real estate transaction, the buyer and the seller. I'm not at liberty to share some of that information, just legally speaking. But generally speaking, the project has been announced, and what, you know, falls into that. Next question, which is probably the most significant, is, is this project going to be noisy? So data centers, hyperscale data centers and crypto mining facilities are completely different worlds. Crypto mining is a noisy operation. Probably have seen that on social media, or Channel 5, or some of these other news outlets when they started coming to Arkansas years ago. They've unfortunately giving, given projects like this, you know, a bad reputation, even though they're unrelated. These hyperscale data centers, look, they're, they're trying to protect a multi-billion-dollar asset, right? They are not going to build something that's gonna create a bunch of noise and be a nuisance to the community. They're, they're putting a lot of money into these things. There's sound suppression systems, they're, they're water cooled. And we've got the, we've got some of these developers on the, on the screen with us, and they can answer to some of that. But the way the project's laid out currently, there's gonna be a 100-foot buffer. They're gonna leave the trees on site, from my understanding, so that way it's not even, you know, visible from the road for the most part. And with that being said, you know, when we started seeing comments come through, we reached out to the client. Hey, guys, we're getting questions about, you know, noise. We know we've answered this question with y'all before, but help us out here. What, what are you guys actually seeing? Mr. Vaughn had supplied this to us.
So I'm gonna give you a couple of videos just for comparison, so let me unmute this, and we'll just play it.
Mayor Lea, it's the Almond City Council. It's currently 2:00 AM Eastern Time in the morning. Right here is an old-school data center built probably early 2000s, maybe early 2010. I currently live on that road in my neighborhood. 30 seconds is the sound you hear from the data center.
So I'll give you a comparison to what it sounds like right now.
What is this?
That's, that's the hospital. That's the road.
Oh, you mean that's.
This is a comparison of the noise that's there now versus the noise that.
Mayor, can you play the other one where he's up at the fence? He's kind of, he's closer to the facility there.
Hang on a second. Uh, let's see, which one was that? Was it this one?
There you go. Yeah. That's the closest one.
Mayor Lea, Almond City Council. Amazon's data center, six buildings total. Got residents right on the other side. 30 seconds, security fence, so it's as close as I can get. So 30 seconds, noise from the data center. Thank you.
So I guess what we're trying to demonstrate is that this, this is a higher caliber data center project than what I think a lot of people are attributing this to. We're not talking about crypto. They're totally separate. We're not talking about crypto. They're totally separate, totally separate projects. So, with that, I suppose, Morgan, you want to talk a little bit about our next steps and what that looks like for the community? Being able to, you know, address concerns down the road when it comes to development?
I'll start off by just going through the planning commission review of the land use.
Excuse me, Morgan. Go ahead and tell them who you are.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you knew that was coming.
Morgan Barrett, City Engineer. So, just going through the initial process of the public hearings that took place at the planning commission. They did, and this was their, the current one was their second time looking at this. So, they were a little more detailed in their questioning than, than the first time around. And planning commissioners came by, had very good questions, very good concerns. And we tried separating the site plan review from the land use question that was in front of us about the rezoning. Because there is, technically, there is a difference. Planning Commission did a very thorough job in analyzing the site and looking at the land use. And when we really dug into it, this facility would go, really, I think it would fit into a C3 zone. But with it going into an I1, it gives us more of a review based on our current codes. Because if you read the I1, when it comes time for the plant, for the planning commission to review the site plan, which will be the actual construction plans, there's a sentence in there. I can't remember it off the top of my head. But it allows them to really review the impact as opposed to some things in a C3 that are allowed by right. Like, and I'm not trying to beat anyone up if they own a mechanic shop or anything like that. But the I1 actually allows a little bit more review and discretion because of the verbiage than, than a C3. When we started looking at this, I just arbitrarily went to Google Earth, zoomed out to the United States, typed in "data center," and pop-up all over Georgia, Washington, and everywhere up in the Northeast. And so, I started looking at the locations. And they were in shopping centers, as you saw in some of the videos. They're adjacent to residential areas. They're adjacent to multifamily developments. They, they are low-impact use, and they fit into everywhere. They, they're just low-impact. And the planning commission took all that into consideration in their review and made the recommendation to the council to approve. With that being said, these sites have to come back. Earlier, Mayor, I saw you had a site plan up. Is there any way to put that back up so I can explain that? So, with the size of the site, they have to come back for, like I said, a site plan review to the planning commission. And that will be a detailed rendering, just what you see here, where we will have an opportunity to look at the locations of the buildings, the setbacks, any kind of mitigation that the planning commission...
So, like, and this, and this site plan has got a hundred-foot buffer along the north edge. If we wanted to come back and add that buffer along Palmer Road or over here on Big Danger, the planning zone can require that at that point?
That's my interpretation of the I1 zone. Because on the site plan, when it comes time to review, the planning commission, there's some language in there that gives them the opportunity to address the impacts. So, they can, in my mind, typically a large-scale development or site plan review is a checklist where, and you can probably help me better than this, but, because I've been on the other side where I've, we've satisfied everything, you have to approve it. But this language is a little unique that I've seen here, where it gives you some discretion. So, you can, what I, in my interpretation, is not approve it and send it back for, for modification, and then come back and look at it again. So, that's why the I1. And that will, because of the size of the site, we'll have to come back to the planning commission for, for staff and planning commission review. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but that's kind of the process that it's gone through. And the public hearing was at the planning commission. It was advertised in the paper. There was a sign actually put out on the property, just the typical process for this type of rezoning.
So, Stephen, if you want to come back up here, what we'll do is we'll go down these list of questions that I got, and we'll just kind of address them publicly so that... What about noise mitigation? Now, I think Morgan just addressed that for the most part.
Yep.
We're not even to that phase yet. So, planning is, we have to get their site plan, which means we have to get the land deals approved, then we can start working on it. But we've seen in his, in his design that they're willing to put these buffers. And it makes a big difference between whether you're air-cooled or water, water-cooled.
Yeah.
An air-cooled data center is going to have humongous fans running. These aren't air-cooled, they're water-cooled.
That, that's part of the reason why the crypto mining facilities that we see on the news in Arkansas, they have a bunch of fans running that are cooling those systems. You know, the project we're looking at has pretty thick concrete walls that are multiple feet thick. So, it insulates some of the noise that way, and they're also water-cooled. So, you're, you're cutting down on the noise with, with, I assume, less friction. I, the folks out here are happy to speak more to how they mitigate some of the sound.
We'll call them in a second. So, the next point, you, you address crypto or Bitcoin. It's not that. In fact, there's state legislation. There's all kinds of things that, that work in our favor to prevent that from happening.
We can actually...
Is it a Chinese or a foreign company?
It is not. No, these are American companies, a American company.
And you explained why it was going to that location?
Yeah.
Will it affect our power rates?
No. I think, early on, early on in the project, it could have. I, I think it would have benefited us if we could have received the power off the grid. Power's not out there, folks. I've spent a lot of time working on this project, trying to find power out in the, the, the market. But in this case, they are looking at developing a combined-cycle onsite generation. So, it would be islanded, co-located to the data center. It's not connecting to the CCU grid infrastructure, right? So, if there were a blackout, if there were any type of, you know, catastrophic event, or, you know, maybe rates had exploded or something, it wouldn't affect the CC grid because they're not connected into each other. Okay? And that's a, a recent development which made this project possible to move forward. And we have somebody generating that power locally.
Uh, they, they don't create jobs?
They create quite a bit of jobs. And, and, you know, they're not, it's not like bringing in a huge manufacturing facility where they're creating a thousand jobs like Haynes did in the T-day. But they are creating a couple hundred jobs, you know? At minimum, and we want to be conservative, we're expecting about a hundred jobs between the site, the, the two sites. With that being said, we're, we're looking at positions that are typically middle to higher income, especially for this area. So, if you, if you receive this little packet I put up front, you've got, you know, sales and marketing, 120,000. You've got data center technicians starting at 71,000, security specialists, 76, network security, 92,000, fire protection engineers, 85,000, DCIM engineers, 108,000, sales engineering, $104,000. And that makes up the core. There's multiple of these positions within the facility. So, we're, we're not talking about, you know, hard, low-paying manual labor. This is, you know, a little bit of a higher skill requirement. And, you know, the question becomes too, how do we find the workforce for that? Started off, we, I, I reached out to all of our local universities that have a computer science program about a year and a half ago, and I indicate, I found out how many students graduated in those programs and sent that to the client to review, and that checked their box. But we also are applying for a grant that's coming up. We're working with one of our local institutions to apply for a workforce grant that would embed a computer science program here in Clarksville to help us seed that workforce for the years to come if this thing comes here. So, we're kind of trying to think ahead on this to the best of our ability.
Answer that?
Yep.
Okay. The public wasn't informed.
We've had multiple events. I, I mean, I've had folks come by my office. I've sat down and talked with them. I've invited folks to come speak with me about it. I've done, on the menu with the chamber, we discussed the data center project, multiple P&amp;Z meetings, CCU meetings. We put it in the paper. I, I mean, it's been out there. I don't know what, am I missing anything? I think we've, I got an open-door policy. If there are any other things going on in town you guys want to talk to me about, feel free to swing by. I'm always here, you know?
If the council let me, I'm going to call on John. John, are you there?
Hi, I'm Sir. Good evening.
Yep. For some reason, the sound's not going through the TV, so I'll ask everybody just to be extra quiet. We'll try to catch it up here. Can you just kind of talk with the council and the, and the public here about the project? And I'm sure you've been listening to some of the questions that's been fielded, so kind of address some of those. We'll help you.
Yeah, no, good afternoon, everybody. I appreciate everyone making time this evening to learn about this project, to hear what we, you know, have to say in regards to the investment and the purpose of the project and why Clarksville was an attractive area for. So, one of the things that has been a constant theme throughout the past two years that we've been working on is the creation of jobs. And I have here on the call with me two of my partners, Justin Brayden and Mr. Bill Wintzyneski. And they'll be able to speak a little bit more in depth to the economic impact and also the job creation impact as well. I live in an area where it used to be farmland and industrial. And when data center came into Virginia, over the last 10, 15, 20 years, it's completely transformed just the community, the environment, not just the immediate jobs that come from running a data center, but also the subsequent, you know, different sectors of jobs that are created because of the, you know, the internet and the digital infrastructure that's built in the area. So, with the demand of, you know, cloud computing space right now, there are a lot of towns and areas that are looking for opportunities to bring in data centers, you know, because of the revenue that it generates locally for the community, but also the high-paying, high-tech jobs that it brings for data center as well as other sectors that it brings in for jobs as well. In terms of the noise, I had a good time. This has been a long time since I've been out at 3:00 AM in the morning. But I had a good time going around. I currently live in between roughly 15 to 25 data centers. So, I thought that it would be an opportunity to go out and visually be able to provide some feedback in terms of, you know, what type of noise these data centers generate. One thing that's different, that will be different in Clarksville than was different in the videos, are all of those campuses I've visited, none of them had any tree buffers. So, tree buffering only adds to the mitigation of sound. And the sound, if you're really searching for the sound from a data center, I would compare it to your outdoor air-conditioning unit running. Not one that's on its last leg, where it's clinging, but just a, a normal one as it runs in the summertime. We, we've had a lot of those questions about noise here in North Virginia. And, you know, once these things are built, if it, if there were trees up, people oftentimes will not notice that those data centers actually existed. So, there's, I appreciate every opportunity to speak with everybody. If there are any additional questions for us, please feel free to ask. And just to touch on the flexibility of the site plan, we're more than flexible to provide additional buffering, you know, that makes, you know, everyone as comfortable as possible. We're not here to show up and, you know, tell people what to do. I think the mayor and Mr. Howserman, along with Mr. Morgan and Cody, can speak to our working relationships since the I1. We've been more of a partnership than us just coming in, sending in requests. So, you know, we're open to understanding everyone's concerns, answering any of your questions. And, you know, if there's anything that we can do site plan-wise, we're definitely more than flexible to accommodate, you know, the requests so that everyone is, you know, feels as good as possible. So, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John. All right, counsel, do you have any questions or comments before I open it up to the public? So, at this point, at this time, we'll go ahead and open this up to the public. Micah Morris, you wish to speak? And what I'll do is approach, when you start speaking, there'll be a timer up here on the screen. Get this thing. When you start speaking, I'll click it, and then we'll just go from there, okay?
Micah Morris from Ozone, Arkansas, here in Johnson County. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mayor Reader, Stephen.
Your honor.
Citizens of Johnson County and Clarksville alike, though I'm not qualified to make any noise comparisons with Montenithus that the military gave me at a young age. I've spent the better part of the last 18 years doing some consulting work in the energy sector and brought me here more than 14 years ago. And I love it here. I love the community. I love what we're doing as a town, what we're doing as a county. And my, my family's home here. This is our home. I hold this place in high regard. And in the last 18 years, I've been able to travel the country and see natural gas fracking, shale booms. I've seen boom towns. I've seen towns bust. Mines come in, mines leave out, mills come in, mills die off, towns die, and towns just grow exponentially overnight. And the energy sector moved from building some of the largest pipeline infrastructure in North America to large power line infrastructure in North America. We move a lot of water now in Texas as consultants. And the last few years, we've moved into carbon sequestration. We've moved into solar panel placement. We've moved into even wind turbines, even though I'm not a wind turbine fan. And data centers. When the personal computer was invented in the 1980s, it was set up so that the internet could take away in the 1990s. And in the early 2000s, data centers were needed. And now with digital banking and social media and websites on our phones, everybody has a computer in their hand, this data is what grain was across Central U.S. It is, it's the new commodity. We don't have a zoo. We don't have a casino. We don't have things that, you know, bring a lot of people in. Some other communities, there are other places that something like this, this is a blessing. There are other places that they could be located. And in my experience, what I'd like to share today with you guys as a group as I wrap up is, I've seen what good things can do to communities, and I've seen communities change over time. I've been fortunate enough to, to be part of that all over the country. And I've seen what crypto mines do, and they can tear communities apart. And this is not that, as has been stated multiple times. So, just please carefully consider our children and our grandchildren and the impact that this will have on our community for the long term and not just so much the trees. Have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen. Representative Pilkington? You were hiding. I hadn't even seen you.
I'm not really hiding. I'm just...
Thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you. Hi, City Council. Appreciate being here today. I'm Representative Aaron Pilkington. I just wanted to give a quick background, a little bit to the data center discussion, and shed some light on, on this project. So, luckily for me, I didn't sign an NDA like Howserman did, so I think I can talk a little more about this project. You know, it's, we're looking at a total investment of over a billion dollars into Johnson County. Now, to put that into perspective, the casino that's going into Russellville is only 500 million. It's actually a bigger economic boom to the River Valley than something like that. This is huge. And, you know, when we first, they started talking to us, we looked around and said, you know, where, you know, there's got to be hyperscale data centers in Arkansas. And the only one we could find, the closest one we could find, was the Walmart Super Data Center. And it was built a mile over the state line in Missouri because of the way their laws were set up. And so, we were losing all that tax money to Missouri. We weren't doing it here. And so, you know, luckily, the legislature decided to change the law. And they designed it in a way that I think is really important. So, they designed it to make sure that to be like Missouri, you had to invest over 500 million dollars. This project does that. You also have to spend over a million dollars in payroll to Arkansans living in Arkansas to get as well. So, we're making sure that jobs are for Arkansans who live here in Arkansas. And so, I think those are two great things. But also, by putting those two metrics in there, we also eliminate any sort of incentive for crypto mines to take, take part of that. And that was a big part of it. Actually, it's funny because if you go look at the vote, Rick McClure, who ran the crypto mining bill, that kind of started all the confusion, and we had to have a special session to clean it up, he actually voted against the data center bill because it wasn't pro-crypto. So, we've, we've, from the get-go, have known that we want to keep crypto out of here. We want to make sure that this is a good, solid investment into our community. And I just, I, I hope the council does this today. You know, this was a bipartisan piece of legislation that, you know, received over 78 votes in the House and almost unanimous, I think, except... 78 votes in the House and almost unanimous, I think except for one vote in the Senate. So, it's, it really shouldn't be a controversial thing, but I understand new things sometimes can be scary to us. Lord knows, I'm a new father. There's been a lot of scary things in being a new father, but I really think this is a good community. And as we talk about, you know, trying to bring more high-tech jobs to the area, you know, the investment that the state has done into computer science, things like that that was under Governor Hutchinson, it's good if we train those people, and we're not sending them to Oregon or California or Colorado, but we're keeping them here in Clarksville. And that's, that's what I hope to see with this project, is being able to keep our kids here in Johnson County. So, that, I appreciate it, and I ask for a good vote on this resolution. Thank you.
Aaron, thank you very much for you, the work you've done as our legislator. Ms. Harriet Reese?
Do you want me to talk so early? There's somebody left me, wasn't there?
Van Hill.
Go ahead, Van.
I'm Van Hill. I'm Lamar, Arkansas. Been a Realtor here in Clarksville for 25 years. I'm a current court member. I was on the Clarksville Regional Economic Development Organization for 10 years, and I'm a current member of the city's CETA Economic Development Organization also. So, just, I agree with Stephen Howserman's depiction and contrast of the data mining versus a data center. It's apples and oranges completely. Everything that I'm seeing here is correct. You know, one of the fundamental principles of economic development is job creation. This not only does quite a bit of job creation, but it's in a pay range that's not normal, it's abnormally high. So, that's excellent. The infrastructure investment is enormous, you know, like was just said by Representative Pilkington, more than the casino is going to bring to Pope County. This is the greatest thing since sliced bread for Johnson County, and I'm 100% in favor of it.
Thank you.
I'm Harriet Reese. I'm one of the grandchildren of Harriet Reese, and this is her property. I actually just found about this, found out about the sale of it last week on Wednesday when I read about the zone proposal, or the zone proposal in the newspaper. Stephen, you did answer a lot of the questions that I had about the electricity, the water, the noise. I think a better noise buffer would be just a safeguard, because there is a nursing home right across the street, there's also Section 8 housing, there is Providence assisted living, there is the hospital. And these are not people that can just leave where they live if there is a incident with the data center, or the noise, or any of the pollution that comes from it. These are not people that can just relocate. I think that is very important to consider. I had a question about the power limits during, but you answered that question. Could I ask you a question specifically, Stephen, about the power? Where is it going to be coming from, and how is it self-generated?
It's a combined cycle. George on the other end, just speaking, you can stream to one.
No, I didn't see him on the meeting.
They got good. So, they're doing what's called islanded power, they're generating power onsite.
Can we give Stephen a microphone?
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe one of those.
So, I'm not the engineer that designed this, so I'll try to fumble my way through it, but what it is, from my understanding, it's a combined cycle natural gas generator that kicks out megawatts. And what that does is, is it takes natural gas, converts it into electricity, and it also has a secondary turbine attached to it which generates a steam turbine. So, you're getting, you're getting a very efficient generator of energy that's then being directed to the data center.
The natural gas generator, does that pick up a lot of emissions?
No, none, no. So, the way they're engineered, and George is not on here, but the way they're engineered, they have zero emissions. So, they have to meet ADEQ, or Morgan, they have to meet, is it ADEQ, Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality? They have to meet standards on that and federal standards, so they're... Can you grab Barbara's microphone?
I'm not trying to put Jason on the spot, but I am. We had a conversation earlier about the safety and the response of the fire department, and he could probably address some of those concerns about safety in adjacent properties and how they would, fire department would prepare and what their response plan is. He had some excellent points earlier today.
So, just real quick on that topic, I'm Fire Chief Jason Weaver. I was explaining with Morgan, a lot of times when we have these, these very complex, large industrial facilities, it doesn't matter what they do, the fire department doesn't have to learn all these specifics about the plant. We don't have to address or be ready to respond to each little specific detail of the plant. What we do is two things really. Number one, there are fire codes in place so that the building has to meet certain requirements. So, there'll be mechanisms, devices onsite built into the plant, safety's built inside the plant to take care of immediate threats. On top of that, each industrial facility is going to have its own subject matter experts, and so, our job is to get with those people if there was ever an incident, and they have the knowledge on the specifics of that industry, and we collaborate and work together with them to mitigate whatever the emergency is.
Great.
I apologize for your time during all this.
Oh, it's okay. It's okay. Now, I just wanted to address my concerns just for the residents that are close to the land. You guys did clear a lot of stuff up. It's hard to find out things from Google whenever there's so many Os in Google. I appreciate the industry coming to Clarksville and choosing Clarksville for its, you know, economic development. I'm just really concerned about like the residents around it. And I know you showed us the video of the noise. If there was any noise that was excessive, would there be ordinances for the noise to be controlled?
Not really. And once it gets to, like in a hospital, once it goes to the design phase, when they built the hospital, there's, Morgan, you can explain, there is no code pertaining to noise decibel in an industrial zone.
It's somewhat subjective, I think our city attorney, if there's anything public better, it becomes a nuisance.
Yeah.
Hey, Mayor Reader, I want to give Bill a chance to hop in on here, because he just needs to know how the modern data centers are built with today's standards, by today's standards, and how they're able to suppress the noise, and also the efficiency of how the power is used to generate the power into the data center and things of that nature, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine. Go ahead, Bill.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. City Council, thank you very much. Can you hear me okay? These are all very great questions. I enjoyed listening to these questions. Data center has evolved over the years. You know, I think it was Michael who said it really nicely, the evolution of the data center. So, I've been doing this for 30 years, and I've seen that evolution firsthand, both as a builder and as someone who leases these to hyperscale companies. And so, the term hyperscale, just for everyone's edification, is the reason they call it hyperscale is because the need for compute in our civilization right now is exceeding the infrastructure to build it. And so, our industry has been reacting, the data center industry has been reacting to this insatiable need for computing. And so, you know, we do the research on the data center, we use Google to do that research. It's, it's, there's nothing new in business, and there's nothing new in life that doesn't have a technology component to it, and all of that technology comes back to a data center. And the reason these hyperscale data centers are built the way they are is because they have to have a layer of risk mitigation from a security standpoint, physical security, and a network security standpoint. So, these buildings are actually rooms inside rooms inside rooms, and so, the modern data center will have seven layers of physical security before a company can get to their actual computer. And so, that sound has been mitigated multiple, multiple times and attenuated multiple times. So, by the time you're in the lobby of the building, you can't hear the data center whatsoever. The new design, now, the speaker was correct, that Michael, I think is, was his name, said that there's, you know, water cooled and air cooled, and the air cooled is quite loud using big chiller plants. The nature of compute now is that we cool directly to the computer chip of the server. So, imagine your laptop, instead of having a fan on it when it gets hot, there's actual liquid that goes directly to that chip and cools it. So, that is incredibly efficient and incredibly, it reduces the noise. I used to work in data centers where you had to have sound abatement and head, you know, headsets on to get in there because it was north of 70 dBs inside the data center. But now, you could have a conversation like we're having today inside a full data center that has hundreds of thousands of servers in it. So, I wanted to address that. And then, the noise on the exterior side, so, these companies that are hyperscale companies have a very strong social governance component to their business, and they are very focused on being of the community and in the community. So, they have job incubation, they have sound attenuation on every component that is outside of the four walls of the data center, if there are any, like, for instance, a generator, backup generator for backup power. Then, those are attenuated to be less than 70 dBs, and those only run in a case of emergency, which is mitigated with the power island. And the job creation around data centers not just affects the immediate, but also the ecosystem. So, there's so many components here to this project, and I just wanted to chime in. So, thank you for that. Let me say my two things.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. So, Mayor, just as the videos that John went and got that you saw earlier, those data centers were pretty much hardscape everywhere around them, except for one did have a little bit of green space. The proposed site plans that were approved at the other location, and like what John said, about 100-foot buffer in addition to the other green space, also tremendously helps on the exterior sound. So, the examples y'all saw was one of those facilities, an older facility, without all the modern upgrades, in a hardscape environment, not in what is being proposed. Sorry, thank you very much. John, any last words before we say?
Oh, man, don't put it like that.
Any last comments? Let me say that way.
What I do want to over-reiterate is the same message and tone that Mayor, Mr. Howserman, everyone has said, we're not crypto mining, we're not Bitcoin, Ethereum, all of them other coins that's out there. This is in no way should form any type of resemblance of that. The mayor, Mr. Howserman, they were very clear day one, along with Representative Pilkington. So, I just wanted to truly reiterate that, and you know, I really do appreciate everyone's time and comments tonight, so thank you for your floor ups there. John, I got one thing I wanted to add to this. This is Justin Brayden, partner with Long Property Group.
Hi, Justin.
Are you okay there? Hey, Mr. Mayor, City Council, everybody. Thank you very much for this. This has been, this has been great. Really appreciate all the questions. You know, one thing that I wanted to talk about is this, the aspect of the community. You know, the earlier speaker talked about how this can build the community up, and this is something that data centers are very cognizant of. You know, when they're investing, you know, a smaller one is, you know, 500 million, up to, you know, up to $2 billion into a community here, they're not looking for a short-term turn of money. They're in it for the decades, and so, they invest in the community to be part of the community. You know, I think this is important to understand, that they want to see the success of the community along with the success of their data center. There's a, you can go out on any of these big data center sites and look up the community outreach programs, and there's, there's just a ton of them. There's one here in Voddington, Virginia, that they have, they sponsored 55 different community initiatives, and these included public Wi-Fi, over a million dollars in scholarships, they built a movie theater, equipment for volunteer fire department, farming and gardening programs. So, they really want to be part of that community, and I think that's important as well.
Yeah, Justin, that's a big deal. I've got George on here. George, we just wrapped up a conversation about power, power distribution, and noise, and noise abatement around that power. Can you just briefly speak to your project and the power part, and how that's all going to play out, and how it's islanded, and then we'll close it out from there? You might want to talk about the other projects a little bit.
Sure, sure. So, to support the data center campuses, we're going to build dedicated natural gas-fired power generation. Those power plants are called combined cycle plants. They're highly efficient, they're considered very clean, meeting all the standards, latest standards by the Environmental Protection Agency from the federal government and the state of Arkansas. Those machines on that site are sound attenuated well below any noise limits that would be considered industrial. And the, there's, so essentially, there's no, there's no solid pollution or gaseous pollution that comes out of those facilities. Further to that, we're going to be developing a multi-modular hydroponic strawberry agricultural park in Clarksville. That park will, is really interesting. It's employing some state-of-the-art growing technology. It's being developed in conjunction with one of the largest greenhouse growing entities in North America, and it is dedicated production for Walmart Corporation. That facility will be powered 24/7 by another natural gas-fired project that will be considered sustainable because it's using waste heat from the gas engines as a heat source to provide thermal energy to that greenhouse complex. Further to that, we're developing a globally, a globally unique biomass to hydrogen process that will be one of a kind, and the largest and only carbon-negative hydrogen production plant in the entire country, and as far as we know in the world. It exceeds all of the production requirements to produce hydrogen that the federal government issues to consider hydrogen green. It's actually carbon-negative, and there'll be nothing else like it in this country.
Or the world.
Right.
Hey, George, can I, can I talk about Purdue just a little bit? I won't sell it like it's going to happen, but I, I want the folks to hear about Purdue and the robotics, the potential of that.
You should, you should talk about it because it's going to be reality in Clarksville.
Okay, so, just of the council and the community here, this is, this is a really cool thing. So, just imagine a day in the future where you download an app on your phone, you go to, you choose Clarksville Strawberry Farm, you pick a robot, a robot that you want goes down a line, it looks at a strawberry plant, you tell it which strawberries to pick, and every time it picks one, it puts it in the basket, and you get paid. That, that day is like right there. I mean, it's right there. Is that not amazing in our, in our lifetime to see that? It's, George, I, I, you're like...
Purdue University is a leading university in the United States for robotics, and they developed this process in conjunction with the grower that I mentioned that's going to be the co-developer for this project.
Yeah, I just thought that was really cool, and people wouldn't believe it for me that I was lying, so I wanted, I wanted them to hear from the other crazy equation in this whole thing.
Yeah, yeah. Sometimes crazy is true. In this case, it's definitely Star Wars kind of stuff that we didn't think we'd see in our lifetime.
That's right. It's really cool. Well, let me ask the council if they have any other questions.
I'd just like to say something. I'm Eddie King.
I just couldn't hear you.
I got in on this, this a little bit a couple of years ago and everything. And Stephen and all these fine folks have worked hard to get this thing started. And it just kind of aggravates me that we have social media and that people can start badmouthing everybody and calling them crooks and everything else. But I'll tell you another thing too, that planning and zoning, those people don't get paid a dime.
Yep.
And, and as one person being on the city council, and I'm sure the rest of them do, they appreciate what you guys do.
Well, she's, the chairman's sitting right back there and I'm going to tell you thanks and make sure that goes on to the rest of PNC committee. We appreciate it.
But not only that, our, our city engineer, the, you know, everybody else that worked on this project, I appreciate it. I, for one, want to see it get done. I want to see them come in here so our grandkids can have a place, a nice place to work.
Mr. King, you hit a button and I'll just relay this to the whole council. We all ran, we talked about the, the day that we stopped exporting our talent. You know, our kids that want these tech jobs and these, these, these type of computer skilled jobs, they can't get those here. They go to Fayetteville, they go to Conway, Lerock, Jonesboro. We're one vote away from changing all of that. Not to mention, if you go back in my time as mayor, there was a push for, you know, more millage to build a gymnasium. Well, what would it say, Judge? And how would it look on your tax revenue for the schools and us if these folks come in and built a one point five billion dollar facility and pay taxes on that annually? And what an impact that has on our schools and all of us? We single-handedly, with one move, have stopped all of the problems we had back in twenty eighteen with this group right here. And beyond that, because there's going to be secondary jobs, tertiary jobs, the tariff revenues coming off of that are going to help the CCU, it's going to help the city to levels I can't even articulate in this meeting, but you're going to be shocked at the number of jobs that's created by the city, by the police department, full-time fire department. It opens up everything for the city. So the answer is here. It's here.
Mayor, it'll open for the county.
Yep, and the county.
We could ask, listen, need four more deputies, need this, need that. It doesn't matter, but it takes money.
Yeah.
The work y'all have done, it's helping everybody in this town.
Well, and then, you know, these folks are strong advocates about community foundations. So they don't just come in and take, they give, they give the community foundations. They, they, they're, they're looking to buy into our community and support us financially, not just any jobs, but it opens up so many more things. So I'll just leave it at that without any further comments or questions.
I, I just have one last comment, Mr. Mayor, by me.
Sure, Bill.
These data centers, these hyperscale data centers employ over fifty percent military. So huge, huge similarities between data centers and the military. I'm ex-military myself, but there's a huge push to find and matriculate military folks, both getting out of their, their service and also retiring and getting into a career in data centers.
Is there an age cutoff?
No, sir.
Good. Thank you, Bill. Okay. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules, place it on the second reading? Second, Ms. Barbara.
Riceinger?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
An ordinance adopting recommended amendment to the official zoning map for the city of Clarksville, Arkansas.
Open it for discussion or questions, one? Seeing none, motion to suspend the rules, place it on its third reading?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Barbara?
Baker?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Riceinger?
Yes.
An ordinance adopting recommended amendment to the official zoning map for the city of Clarksville, Arkansas.
We'll open it for discussion, questions? Seeing none, motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Barbara?
Bradley?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Riceinger?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes. I don't see an emergency clause, but we, we have a motion to find that an emergency exists.
There's not any need for an emergency.
Oh, that's right. Because this, yeah, 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 sorry. Thank you, council. John, Justin, Bill, George, thank you very much. We're on to the next phase. We're still alive.
Yeah, we appreciate your time. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank y'all.
Thank you, Mayor. Have a good evening.
Y'all too. Six C is going to be the ordinance for rezoning D V N LLC. Ms. Barbara, could you read that?
An ordinance to that-
Can you wait just one second? Would you catch Rusty? I'm sorry. Hey, do you have those surveys that you can hand out? I'm so sorry.
And the, let the property go to the east and west side.
Okay, yep.
This is part of the middle, it's what the county owns now. This is a few properties on the upside.
Thank you, Rusty.
Yeah, I got it.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. I should have caught you up front.
Can we get one for the minutes?
Oh, yep. You can have mine. Rusty, thank you very much.
An ordinance adopting recommended amendment to the official zoning map for the city of Clarksville, Arkansas. Whereas the city of Clarksville has heretofore adopted a zoning ordinance and official zoning map to guide and influence the allocation and arrangement of land uses, the development of land and the future building within the corporate limits of the city of Clarksville. Whereas a petition was filed in accordance with provisions of said ordinance to rezon certain lands within the corporate limits of the city of Clarksville. Whereas a public hearing was held on said petition on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. The planning commission approved the boundary change on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four and recommended that the city council adopt the change, whereas said change was reviewed by its entirety and found to be wholly acceptable. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Clarksville, Arkansas, that section one, the following described land shall be rezoned from zoning classification R one and C three to I one. Description Exhibit A, all of said property being located off Big Danger Road in Clarksville, Arkansas. Section two, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed.
We'll open it for discussion or questions?
What, what is this, you know?
This is that lot just south. You know where the water tower is? It's south of that, between the interstate and there, along Big Danger. From the Reese property south. Yes. Questions, comments, discussion, council? Seeing none, motion to suspend the rules, place it on its second reading?
So moved.
Second, Ms. Barbara?
Edens?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Riceinger?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
An ordinance adopting recommended amendment to the official zoning map for the city of Clarksville, Arkansas.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, entertain a motion to suspend the rules, place it on its third reading? Second?
Second.
Ms. Barbara?
King?
Yes.
Riceinger?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
An ordinance adopting recommended amendment to the official zoning map for the city of Clarksville, Arkansas.
Okay. We'll open it for discussion or comments, council? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second? It was Baker, Baker. Baker, you were the second on that.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Barbara, would you?
Riceinger?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
King?
Yeah. Thank you, council. Six D is the ordinance to conduct business with the city Hunter's towing. Ms. Barbara, could you read that ordinance, please?
An ordinance specifically permitting Alderman city officials and municipal employees to conduct business with the city of Clarksville, Arkansas. Whereas the city council of the city of Clarksville has determined that there are certain situations of which it would be beneficial to the city of Clarksville to conduct business with Alderman city officials and municipal employees. Whereas Arkansas Code annotated fourteen forty-two one oh seven B I authorizes the governing body of the city to enact an ordinance specifically permitting such business. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Clarksville, Arkansas. Section one, Hunter's towing is authorized to provide towing services for the city of Clarksville pursuant to the city's policies and procedures for dispatching towing services. Section two, the extent of this authority for furnishing supplies, equipment or services to the city of Clarksville shall be limited as follows. Any contract for furnishing supplies, equipment or services to the city of Clarksville in which an Alderman city official or municipal employee is interested in shall be subject to any and all bidding requirements set out by state law and city ordinance. Be it the city council, may waive those bidding requirements provided it complies with state law and the city ordinance prescribing the manner in which the bidding process may be waived. Section three, the all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of the conflict.
We'll open it for discussion. Questions? Seeing none, entertain a motion to suspend the rules, place it on its second reading? Second?
Second.
Ms. Barbara?
Baker?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
King?
Yeah.
Riceinger?
Yes.
An ordinance specifically permitting Alderman city officials and municipal employees to conduct business with the city of Clarksville, Arkansas.
Opening back up for discussion, questions? Seeing none, we have a motion to suspend the rules, place it on its third reading?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Barbara?
Bradley?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
King?
Yeah.
Riceinger?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
An ordinance specifically permitting Alderman city officials and municipal employees to conduct business with the city of Clarksville, Arkansas.
We'll open it up for discussion or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Barbara?
Edens?
Yes.
King?
Yeah.
Riceinger?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Six F is going to be orders to conduct business with plane works.
An ordinance specifically permitting Alderman city officials and municipal employees to conduct business with the city of Clarksville, Arkansas. Whereas the city council of the city of Clarksville has determined that there are certain situations of which it would be beneficial to the city of Clarksville to conduct business with Alderman city officials and municipal employees. Whereas Arkansas Code fourteen forty-two one oh seven B I authorizes the governing body of the city to enact an ordinance specifically permitting such business. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Clarksville, Arkansas. Section one, plane work is authorized to provide pool repair services for the city of Clarksville. Section two, the extent of this authority for furnishing supplies, equipment or services to the city of Clarksville shall be limited as follows. Any contract for furnishing supplies, equipment or services to the city of Clarksville in which an Alderman city official or municipal employee is interested shall be subject to any and all bidding requirements set out by state law and city ordinance. Be it the council may waive those bidding requirements provided it complies with state law and city ordinance prescribing the manner in which the bidding process may be waived. Section three, the all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of the conflict.
Counsel, the reason this is required is more of a firefighter, he's a diver. And when they, they save us just a tremendous amount of money by coming up there and diving that pool. But we have to have this ordinance in place in order to pay him because it is conflict. So any questions or comments? Not entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on its second reading?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Barbara?
King?
Yes.
Riceinger?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
An ordinance specifically permitting Alderman city officials and municipal employees to conduct business with the city of Clarksville, Arkansas.
We'll open it for discussion or questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion to suspend the rules, place it on its third reading?
So moved.
Second? Eddie's got the, the motion.
Riceinger?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
An ordinance specifically permitting Alderman city officials and municipal employees to conduct business with the city of Clarksville, Arkansas.
Do we have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Either one. Baker?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
King?
Yeah.
Riceinger?
Yes.
It's hard to get into a groove, you know? Sorry. Six F is the resolution for setting a public hearing for the vacating of University Street, actually.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Clarksville, Arkansas, that the public hearing on the petition to vacate filed by the University of the Ozark shall be heard on the twelfth day of August, twenty twenty-four at the regular meeting of the Clarksville City Council. It is so resolved.
So it's not indicated on, on this particular drawing, council, but to the right of that red line is where the bean trailhead is going to go. So part of that is, we had to put a mirror up right here because this wall that's here, it's a very dangerous intersection. It's hard to pull out. So what we're proposing is that we turn this back over to the property owner, University Street, keep the, keep the utility usement so that we have utility usement through there and close that street down or get it back to university, at least up to the maintenance there. This portion will be closed. We'll move the trailhead over here and it, it should significantly enhance safety in that intersection significantly. So we're trying to set a, a date for a public hearing. That's part of the process. So I'd appreciate a good vote on this. So we're going to have one on the twelfth, August? Yeah. Y'all just have to approve it and then I'll set it up, me and them have to set it up.
You ready for the motion?
You have a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve the resolution to set the public hearing on vacating University Street.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Barbara?
Bradley?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Riceinger?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes. And then six G, CCU has uploaded and sent you all, did you all receive a copy of the audit? Had a chance to review it and have any questions? Seeing none. Thank you all very much. Where's Roy at?
He's been hiding in the closet.
Roy's hiding, is he in the closet?
He just come out of the closet.
Order here, order here, moving on, let's go. CCU, you're up next.
Thank you, Roy.
We got it, we got it.
That's not good, Mr. King. I'm Roy Young with Clarksville Connected Utilities. Y'all don't have my report this week, this meeting. Somebody took Friday off and failed to send it in. I'll have that person disciplined tomorrow. I don't know if I should fire myself or what, but-
Start at the top, right?
Start at the top, you know? So I guess I'll take three days off, pay for it. Anyway, since I failed to send the, my report in, I'll just give you a quick review. Y'all did get the audit. So if you got any questions or anything, just email them to me or whatever and we'll get them taken care of. Just a quick overview. We've just been working on, the water insurer crew's been working on a lot of the lead and copper rule, checking for copper or lead lines in the, in the system. That's because the deadline's coming up on it pretty quick. And so they've been really hustling on it, trying to get it taken care of. Plus, we have been having quite a few leaks. We had a twelve inch leak the other day at Cedarwood and Rogers. We lost quite a bit of water out there. So, see, that's what I get for firing myself. So, see, that's what I get for firing myself.
That's a sign, Roy. That's a sign.
Maybe they don't want me to go yet.
I think that's where it says, speed up.
Okay. No, that's what somebody else is back there is wanting me to do, speed up, I'm going to take my time. But, anyway, we also been, we're looking at taking some phone business out into the county for the schools and some of the other larger entities. As long as they got internet, we can sell them phone services. So, we got the commission to approve that during our last meeting, so it'll give us a little more revenue there. You know, anybody that's big enough that we can make quite a bit of money in one area, we're going to look at doing that. Been in the Spanish, taking care of right-of-way trees and things like that that people like to call about, gripped to the mayor, so, you know.
That never happens.
He don't mind telling me about it.
They go to Winnet with it, she just passes.
She passes it on.
All the time. Relentless.
And then, the, of course, you know, the wastewater plant, we're doing quite a bit of studies out there with the Olson Engineering. We can't really do anything with that until we get that study back to see what kind of money we're going to have to spend there. So, that'll be a pretty good job, I'm afraid. We have had some incidences at works, and I'm one of them. I've bummed up my knee, so I'm getting an MRI tomorrow on it, so we'll see what's going on with it. On our broadband, we got, actually, 2,227 services now hooked up, so it's like about 51% take rate.
Yeah, that's good.
So, it's coming along pretty good. Other than that, everybody's doing pretty good. We got a lot going on. We're staying busy.
Yeah.
Keeping everything going best we can, you know? We're working on a lot of equipment, trying to keep everything going, our chippers, everything, so.
Especially this heat, it's hard to keep them, it's hard to keep things running.
It's hard to keep everything running all the time, so.
We have a busy time ahead of us, I'll tell you that. You, me, Stephen, got a lot of work out of us here, so.
We do.
Good work.
Anyway, y'all need anything, just give me a holler, if you got any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you, Roy.
Deidre does. Deidre's female. I'm better.
Stephen, I just, I don't know how you're going to top what you just did, but go ahead, try.
Yeah, so, just a couple of updates, some other stuff we've been working on, triathlon, August 17th. The adult triathlon will be in the morning, the kids try, if you have kids between the ages of, I think, seven and 15, they can sign up. Highly recommend you get engaged with that, it's a great event. My son's been doing it every year we've had it, and he loves it. Working, spoke with the president of the University of Ozarks late last week, there was a last-minute grant that had come down the pipeline, we were all considering how we can apply for it, and we think we can get some funding for a computer science program that would be obviously a huge asset for obvious reasons, and further a workforce. Spent some time over at the shoe factory, everybody's aware of the situation over there. The new tenants flew down with about 10 folks from their executive team to tour it, get some, you know, final walkthroughs done, and answer some questions with the contractor, so we'll be having an announcement with that pretty soon coming up. We'll get to announce some new job creation out of that building and return the jobs that were previously lost, so excited there. Everything else is tracking. Am I missing anything?
You referenced the Monroe Building? You referenced the Monroe Building?
Yes, sir, so I mean, yeah, shoe factory.
So, just, he's underselling that just a little bit, I want y'all to be aware that when this settles out, that the only all-American Red Wing shoe that they have in the company is going to be made in Clarksville, Arkansas. Think about that. Their only line, their heritage line, is coming to Clarksville, Arkansas. Who would have thought? Who would have thought, right? That's not even, he's been, he's been very, very, I don't know what's wrong with him tonight, he's been very, 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 being very coy, he's not talking about the tire plant, he's not talking about Strawberry Farm, he's not talking about ammunition company, he's not talking about the other ammunition companies, there's a lot he's not talking about. So, y'all should get on him and make him, squeeze him until you get juice out of him, there's a lot more going on than we can possibly tell you about.
We do have a lot going on, I'd like to make sure, you know, I want to check boxes and stuff, there's still a lot of work to be done on a lot of things.
I mean, I'm all gas, no brake.
I tried not to say anything without having 100% confidence. Be quiet, be a long and right.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Stephen. Abby, I saw you back there. Had a wonderful day with the murals, murals. When I say mural? It's hard to say.
Abby with the chamber, Hannah apologizes for not being here, but you guys have her full downtown report. You also have my full report, but I did want to give you guys a couple of updates. So, Mario Varela, who is our community relations director, he has accepted a new position at Arkansas Tech in Ozark. Happy for him, sad for us. His last day was Friday at the chamber, and he'll be starting that position this week. Also wanted to let you guys know that I have taken on a new career path, and I have accepted a teaching position, I'm teaching ninth grade English at Russellville Junior High. I'll still be living in this community, but my last day at the chamber will be July 20th. I wanted to thank you guys for your support and encouragement for me and my chamber, and the chamber as well. And then, Ray and the executive committee are working on filling those positions. He also apologizes for not being here tonight, they left me alone. Katie's here, though. But, if you have any questions, concerns, you can talk to Ray.
Abby, thank you for your partnership, thank you for your leadership, I'm going to miss you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Chief Ross? Yeah, he hasn't learned to do that yet. You have my report, Jerry.
You have my report.
Too late now.
Jeff Ross, Clarkville Police Department Chief, offense violations for the month of June was 205, they wrote 118 tickets, and they gave out 298 warnings. And we had 24 accidents, CID had 14 cases assigned to them, they closed out 12 of them, one searched one, and we had one unlocked, Narcan saved. Code enforcement for the month, she had 58 properties completed out of 62, so. So, where it, any questions?
Busy month.
Yes.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, sir.
Cody? Chief Weaver? Weaver's on a roll.
Jason Weaver, city fire chief. You guys have our stats for our report. In addition to that, I just want to say that the guy's been working hard, doing some training with new hires, we've been really busy, really proud of the guys and what they've been able to do, the work they've done. I've had a lot of, what is a lot to us, of very serious calls in quick succession this past month, so just want to mention them and the good work they've done.
Yep. There was one, I can't remember what it was, Jason, it was like six calls within a half an hour, and they were pretty serious. Was that last Saturday or two Saturdays ago when all that happened?
Yes, sir. We, I mean, from large truck fires to.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, the Walmart truck caught fire, yeah.
And more than one area ambulance on I-40 with traffic stop, so, I mean, it was, yeah.
You guys are amazing, guys are really amazing, I appreciate everything you do, for sure.[1582.81]